Hey everyone, this is Laura Judge and you are listening to the Not Board of Education podcast. I am here with my friend Andrew Cole.
Hey everyone, I'm Andrew Cole and I am happy to be here. This is the first episode.
Yes, so a little bit about me, like I said, Laura Judge, I'm a parent of two. I have two children in the Cobb County Schools, a high schooler who's in the magnet program, and an elementary student that is about to transition into middle school. And why I wanted to do this podcast is because I've been interested in our Board of Education and decisions that they make since about 2020, right around when the pandemic started. I was a parent that was looking to our Board of Education for decisions to be made. And when I started watching things, I was a little disturbed at what I saw. It led into me even running for school board in 2024. And now I'm back to being an advocate for children in the county. What about you, Andrew?
As for me, I grew up here and moved away for about eight years for a job. And I was in Chicago, it's where I met my wife. And then during the pandemic, we decided to move back home, be closer to family. And we had our first daughter at that time, and now we've got another daughter. The oldest is in kindergarten. And knowing that she was about to be in kindergarten, I decided to start attending board meetings and wanted to see what was going on with the local school system that I had gone through and had a very positive experience with. And then after I received a notification for one of the policies that was going to be heard and reviewed at a meeting, I wanted to attend and see what it was like to go in person. And I won't get into all the specifics, we'll cover that at some point, but one thing led to another. And I realized, like you, there's a lot that could be better. And at the very least, more transparent, more digestible, more understandable for the community, so that everyone can know what's going on. And I wanted to be a part of that change and decided to run as well. And I'm now back to being just a normal, involved citizen and concerned caretaker. And I am happy to still be exploring these topics and opportunities for the community to understand, learn more, and get involved more.
Yeah, something that you had on your website was Cobb Dad, Cobb Grad. So I love that about you, Andrew, is that you are just like anybody else in the community. A lot of Cobb families have gone to Cobb County Schools. And now their children or grandchildren go into the schools. And so they don't really, they're really involved in their personal schools and what makes them better, whether it's through the PTA or through their administration at their individual school. But a lot of those decisions come down from our Cobb County School District. And I think that that's important. And something that we both realized was that everyday parents don't see really how the sausage is made, to say the least.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And going to that first meeting and seeing the way the public can be heard and how they're not engaged within the moment. And you hear from these other parents and teachers and students who have all come and spoken. And they want to understand more about how all these policies are coming down and being rolled out and what's leading to such quick approval of everything. And because to me, if you're having a meeting with elected representatives, a topic's presented, that's where the discussion should occur, kind of like when you see like a Supreme Court hearing. And I saw over and over, they would just introduce something in the afternoon, talk about it maybe a little bit, and then in the evening session, stamp it and pass it. This is not very clear, and no one could even keep up if they're just learning about a policy that was dropped on the same day. And so there's, there's just a lot that can be improved.
Yes, absolutely. And so we want to reiterate, this is not Board of Education, a play on words. We are not board members, but we are community members who are really interested in what our Board of Education here in Cobb County is doing. And we want to be more transparent with the community, talk about policies that are being made, answer your questions. We would love to have people on here talking about things that they're doing in their individual schools. One of my complaints were that our board members used to have board member comments. They don't have them anymore, so you don't hear what's happening in their individual communities. And I think that's really important. And so I think with that, we can hop into what was discussed at the last board meeting. So last board meeting was February 13th on Galentine's Day, Thursday. And Andrew, any highlights from the board meeting that you may have seen?
I don't want to take the headline, but the the one thing that stands out to me the most is that that was going to be the budget or the continuation of the superintendent's contract renewal. And I know that every year, there's always a sort of will they, won't they anticipatory energy before that topic comes up. And in the past, they, they being all the board members, have had various comments during the meeting on the day of. And it's led to, at the very least, a, an exploration of concerns from different board members, different parts of the county. And this year, none of that really came up. And it was, it's, it's always very quick, too quick, in my opinion, for such a significant renewal with such an intricately worded contract involved. And this year's was, was very, very quick. I know we'll get into more of that in a moment. But if you ask me what happened in February, that's the first thing that comes to mind is that, that contract renewal.
Yeah, just to give our listeners a little bit of background information, our Board of Education is made up of seven members. It is still a partisan board. So we have four Republican members and three Democratic members. And every February, our superintendent, who is hired by the board, is, comes up for a contract extension, not really a renewal. In, in the state of Georgia, our superintendents can have a contract that is out to a maximum of three years. And so every February, they make sure that his contract stays at that three-year maximum. Like Andrew was saying, normally, there is some discussion around this contract. Actually, in December of 2021, the contract was updated. Where there's another organization that I have worked closely with, Watching the Funds Cobb. We have the contract on our website and on our Facebook page, if you want to look over that. But being that the superintendent is the employee of the board, there was a lot of concerning things in that contract that would make me concerned to extend for another year. Also, a new board member was just elected to that board. And he started in January. And my contention with him signing on to extend that contract is, how can you evaluate someone that you've only seen their work for 30 days? So I've known that normally the Democrats have had issues with that. But again, it was a unanimous vote with one board member absent. One of the Democratic board members absent.
Yeah, I was gonna see if I could comment on that as well. Going back to the, the, the new board member. I, I think it's a very, very legitimate point that as far as understanding internal information and operational needs, you've only been in the role for a month, and it's a lot to just automatically sign on to continue. Certainly, he's been in the community, he's aware of general operations, but not the behind the scenes specifics of it all. So I thought that could be perceived as a little quick, a little rash. And I, in the same vein, I would also still want actual discussion to be had, instead of just coming out and rubber stamping everything, which is what they've done with other policies in the past. And then this year, in the January meeting, when it came to light that one of the board members wouldn't be able to attend the February meeting, which is for this extension review action item, a very significant topic. There were, there was plenty of advance notice provided. They could have chosen a new date. They could have come up with another measure to have that item heard or reviewed by the full board. And they didn't do it because the majority controls all those decisions. And on top of that, they decided to keep everything as scheduled, knowing that that board member wouldn't be able to attend. And that's just something that I, has rubbed me the wrong way for the past few years is taking whatever measures they can to limit the ability of the, another side, either side, I wouldn't want to see this happen to. And limit their ability to attend meetings, or at the very least, speak at the meetings that they are attending. To your point with them taking away board comments and things like that, it's just been more, more presses on the mute button whenever they can.
And, and the biggest thing that, since we have been kind of entrenched in, in board policy and what's happening at a board level, is that the superintendent's contract is not small potatoes. News media around has reported the superintendent's salary being $350,000 a year. However, again, like I said, you can look at the contract on Watching the Funds website. And the Atlanta Journal-Constitution also reported that his actual annual salary is $479,000. So that is a huge dump. And then things were written in the contract was that basically he has a golden parachute, that if he gets upset or leaves the job, he gets paid out for the full amount of his contract. So we're looking at almost $500,000 for each year. So overall, $1.5 million for the three years to pay him out in case anything were to happen. And so that concerns me as a taxpayer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that number including the monthly car stipend?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's even more bells and whistles.
Education and everything else. But I mean, again, people can look up why we would ask for more time on this contract. It's, I, I don't think it needed to be extended. I also don't think it, his contract needed to be ended. Because our, our school district is doing good things. And one of those good things is actually we have a new Cobb Innovative Technical Academy opening up over in the Alatuna area. Any thoughts about that?
Yes, yeah, this came up. For Post 7, where I am, when you start to get up near the top border, you're in the Harrison area. And when I was speaking to citizens around there, that was something that they were excited to hear about, period. And I know we've already had success with locations elsewhere in the county. This is in a new area that hasn't received a big, I don't know the right phrase, but addition, a new opportunity for breadth of education there. And what was really neat was, over and over, when I was at people's doors, I'd be talking about different policies and, and updates for the, the community. And many people felt that opportunities and educational focuses and initiatives had become what they felt too narrow. And they just said, I totally am okay with college prep being a path. But the, the, the way schools become, it's almost like with my kid, they don't have any choice. And you better get in gear and focus on getting into college and doing a four-year-plus program right out the gate. And these people, very understandably, and I mean, with, with every justification in the world, are saying, well, I didn't do that. And I'm, I'm doing very well. And I would want my kid to have these opportunities to be able to walk out into a program or a a position right away, if that's something that they're interested in. And so I really like seeing this type of provision present in other geographic areas of the county. I think it'll be a really good thing.
Yeah, I, I actually think they're looking at possibly even doing one more after this one. But we're, we're working on getting through this one first. And it was a very robust discussion. There was plans and everything to see what it would look like, what the land purchase looked like. And as far as transparency around a project, as someone who's asked for that previously, I was very proud of the work that they showed and how they talked to basically the community who's listening to these school board meetings about. And so again, we have, we have great things happening in our district. I think when you have criticism for the district, people think that you're only looking at the bad things. And we're not. But we had, we did have a lot of hard things to talk about at this school board meeting. What next would you like to talk about, Andrew, that might have came up?
Um, I, it's really a sad topic, but the student that attempted harm on themselves on school campus, I, I know that that was on everyone's mind. And the, the news that they did not make it through, I thought was very sad. And I don't doubt that everyone at the school that day did everything they could to assist the student. And I just wanted to mention how sorry I am about that happening and how I hope that it can continue to highlight the need for additional investments and explorations of proven measures for improved mental health for students. I, I don't think there's a way to do too much. And I would always welcome interaction with the community from the board to hear about what they feel would go a long way with their children, their students. Because I know we've got some access, and I know we can't be everything to everyone. But I also know that we can definitely do more. And that's something that I heard a lot from the community over the last year or about two, was the stress that these kids are under. It is not like what I went through. It's not like what you went through. I mean, we were having very real conversations on front porches. And I, I, I don't know any of the specifics about the, the student or, or history or anything like that. I just know the, the really sad outcome. And would want to have our school district and all the services we provide help people access guidance and peace, however they can get it, if, if we can help.
Yeah, so Andrew's mentioning the, the Lindley Middle School student. And so unfortunately, she did harm herself, and she did not make it. So prayers are definitely with her family. And that hurts because Andrew and I met through gun violence prevention with one of the organizations that we were both kind of working with, Moms Demand Action. In the Cobb County School District, from February of last year to February of this year, we had at least three gun instances in our campuses and at our schools. And it's something that we've talked about a lot, to really, you know, talk with the community of what, about what safety looks like, what safe storage of firearms looks like. The mental health for our students that are struggling, that might want to harm themselves or harm others. And adding on those layers of protections to keep our kids safe. Because unfortunately, this generation of kids that are coming behind us, I talk a lot about, I graduated high school in 99, Columbine was the big thing that happened. And now my kids are going through school shootings, and it is going to be generational trauma that our kids are growing up with the threat of school shootings. And again, our district has done good things. We have a tip line. It's the Vector Tip Line. I can add in the comment section of how to reach out to the Vector Tip Line. When you see something, then you say something. We also have school resource officers. We have a police force about, of about 80 student, uh, excuse me, 80 officers, along with three dogs with those officers. However, we do have about 117 schools in the district. So we don't have an officer for every school. So there are some gaps in areas that we need to fill. And because of that, our superintendent introduced a new product or new tech, as he described, that he went and purchased to help protect students from gun violence. Did you want to talk about it, Andrew?
I, yes, yeah, I mean, this was, this is surprising-ish to me. I, to, to your point regarding some of the, the proven policies or methods we could recommend in our community as far as safe storage goes, that's something that costs very little. And I mean, really only costs a commitment to flyers, maybe an educational program for parents and caretakers to understand the number one contributor is easy access in a, in a moment of potentially clouded judgment. And if you are able to hinder that in any way, that could provide time to intercept, talk with someone, and de-escalate. Certainly, I agree that stopping weapons from entering the campus is, is another part of it. This new endeavor is a branded purchase of trained canines. And it's a pilot of sorts, was what I gathered from the, the demo. And they'll be around to, because I think instead of metal detectors, it always comes up that that would take a really long time for everyone to go through and enter school. And in my perfect world, we don't have to do that because people aren't so fearful and/or upset and/or antagonistic to warrant bringing weapons to school. But I also understand the need to stop it if it's going to be entering. So it's not, I was, I did not expect it. But also could see like the, there's been a track record of investing into products and services like this. So it didn't fully surprise me either.
Yeah, I'm a person who kind of watches other districts and what they're doing. Some districts went to clear backpacks, which didn't work, or was a financial burden on some people. As well as sometimes, especially when you're talking about middle school to high school, female students or students that are menstruating, like having a clear backpack would cause issues. Some schools did do the, not necessarily metal detectors, but weapons detection systems. They, they're kind of more free, free-flowing. You'll see them at our football games now because we do have the setup for our football games. However, for some, the laptops would set them off and say that there were weapons available. So I, I mean, I understand that as well. But this branded canine that they bought in is called Vapor Wake Canines, very similar to what you would see at an airport. And they detect unspent ammunition and weapons. The hard part is, is that two dogs cost $80,000. And again, we have 117 schools. Two dogs can't be everywhere, and they also have to go through training. And you also have a limited lifespan on a dog. So looking at that expenditure is concerning to me, to say the least. I would love to keep our students safe. I actually don't mind having our school resource officers and the, the dogs that they do have already. However, those dogs are not Vapor Wake dogs that detect firearms.
Yes, and I, I agree with you there. That was something that was a topic regularly discussed. I mean, with parents every month, but certainly over the last year, when I was talking to different citizens out here in West Cobb, was school safety. It is on everyone's mind. Everyone has a different idea of what it means and how to provide it. And the officers being present was, to your point too, I feel that that is a piece of the solution. I don't think it is all we can or should do. And then when they are there, I know that there are specific proven training programs that could be added on, provided annually, that help everyone benefit. They are trained on the latest procedures, methods, not only with de-escalation, but also how to interact with members of different communities that that officer may not be familiar with or have received in their basic training before becoming a school-specific designated resource officer. So those are other aspects that are sitting right there on the table that don't get explored or discussed publicly at board meetings, while other initiatives like this new pilot program are readily, without voting because of that, that price threshold, where if it's under a certain dollar amount, you kind of pick anything and, and try it out. So.
Yeah, and also our superintendent says that, you know, a lot of these monies comes from the governor's grants. So that is something that I do personally, is I look at what our state legislators and the governor has kind of earmarked for the local school districts. And last year, the governor sent $45,000 per school out to the school districts. And again, with us having so many, it would come out to be about $50 million to have, to beef up our security, to make sure that our kids are safe in schools. He is looking at giving, I believe, another set of money this year as well. So I know I mentioned that our school board members don't have time to do board member comments, but our superintendent does. And he was very thankful to the state administration for this grant for these canines. And we'd like to know your thoughts, you know, we'll, we'll kind of look at comments that people send us to further go into this or talk to you more about it. But yeah, our superintendent also thanked the federal administration for other things as well. Did you want to go into that, Andrew?
This has happened a few times over the last few years, where there have been somewhat unabashed acknowledgements toward certain parties and political leaders. And I don't think it's any secret because of the, the partisan nature of the board elections that we have in Cobb. that we have in Cobb and the, uh, hmm, so what's the right way to say this? The.
This is a uncensored show.
The historical, uh, record of, of meetings passed with the, the superintendent comments. There's just a, there is a very clear allegiance and, um, and belief system. It's, it is, it is, our district is being heavily influenced by identity politics and, and party loyalty, uh, to a degree that I feel is unwarranted and has become on, on both sides, uh, at times, uh, just unnecessarily antagonistic. Um, I, I think that's gonna go into a whole thing as far as, we should, we should spin that off for, for another episode, but, um, more of the same, I guess, is, is how I feel about what was, what was said.
I mean, our, our s- school board, um, with keeping their Republican majority, um, they were very happy to, um, have a, what they call a conservative board and fight for the identity politics that they have fought for, um, that are, um, that we're seeing at a federal level. And our Department of Education under the new, the Trump administration has called, uh, book banning Biden's book bans, um, a hoax. And our superintendent decided to highlight the hoax nature, um, and affirm his belief in removing books from our schools.
And he's very quick to, uh, not only he, but other board members too, are quick to clarify that these are not book bans. We are not banning them. We're simply removing them. And if you are a student who, because of various limitations in their life, might only be able to access materials at school, and now this has been removed, well, in effect, that is a ban. Oh, but they can go to libraries. Well, if you are under sixteen and you do not have the economic means or time or physical ability to get to a library easily, like, oh, will you get it online? Uh, well, there are limitations here too. Like, so, okay, I hear you. You didn't ban it. It's not like you're forbidding it from entering. I could see limitations being made on when or where that could be read. So then you're at ninety-five percent of a ban, not a full ban, but in, in effect, banned still.
Either way, it is censorship in some way or form. And then also, um, this has been going on for years. It's not anything new. Um, the interesting thing that I felt was that a book that was removed last board meeting, um, and the title is escaping me right now, but it was about trafficking. And, uh, it's a autobi- autobiographical story about how this woman, when she was a teenage girl, got trafficked, abducted, and things that she looked out for. Um, and it was interesting that the superintendent went and discussed and said that we can't turn a blind eye to the trafficking that happens here in Cobb County, but we also can't have these books because they are inappropriate for kids of that age. Um, when obviously someone of that age went through an actual trafficking story. Um, the other thing I look at is, you know, a lot of people say that parents should have the decision to make the decision about these books. And I fully agree. I've, I've been one of those parents that certain things that my kids have read, I tell them it's, I don't think it's of their, like, interest. And I, I really would prefer them not to read it. I, I kind of look at the books that they go through. Does every parent do that? No, but like, I think that if my child picks up a book that they want to read and I'm there to kind of give them guidance, then I should be able to tell them whether I want them to read it or not. They are still taking a decision away from parents, um, even though they feel like the parent's decision should be made in other areas like the public library and stuff. Um, and it, it becomes a very, very slippery slope, um, especially with book removals, uh, from our schools.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. And I have heard plenty on, on all sides and directions about what the right move is regarding this. And I, I do think it comes down, uh, to a degree of, of media literacy, not only for students and parents and caretakers and educators. What is being provided? What is being turned into formal curriculum and where that line's going to be? And I don't think certain things that might be a little too advanced or bold or, uh, not everyone would be ready for should necessarily be made part of a required curriculum or, or a class. And if that was a concern, having reviews or permissions being provided by every single custodian, caretaker, parent, okay, that's an option. If, if something is that vital to, to, or, or we feel is, my concern is that descriptor, that, that level, that red flag that we're throwing up on certain books, who is deciding when that flag gets thrown up? And what is too adventurous or uncomfortable or advanced or inappropriate? What does that mean? What does that look like? And so far historically, there's been this sort of nebulous, which so is the Supreme Court. Uh, I know it when I see it. Okay, great. What was wrong with this book? And why did you feel that it was so inappropriate that we're completely removing it from access? And that is just completely lacking in the way of transparency when these decisions are being made. I, I know we spoke about that, that one title and the topic there, but even then, and this is, this is where I get, uh, a little fiery because we're, we're throwing that flag up based on your perception and your, your preferences, your lifestyle, your identity, your political, religious, sociological beliefs. And that isn't what everyone else in the county has, what everyone else in the world has. And so we, we have a commitment to providing an education to every student in the county. And we're going to provide a more narrowed one because some of these things make us uncomfortable. We can't explain why, cause it's too much work. It's just like, it really gets out of control.
And the hard part is, is that, you know, I come from a family of educators and I know the amount of schooling that they've had to go to, to teach in a classroom. And our media specialists are there to make sure that our kids are educated. They are not there, um, for some of the, the culture wars that are thrown out of pedophilia or grooming or any of those things. They are there to make sure that our kids are educated and that they know what the world looks like outside of their bubbled in community. Um, and so my biggest thing is, is if we are hiring the correct people to be media specialists, we need to trust them as well as, you know, and this is something that I've said when the book removal started, is that our superintendent has been there since twenty fourteen. Um, he's in charge of the people who do the procurement. So a lot of these books got there under his tenure. Um, so why are they all of a sudden a problem now? Um, and that, that's concerning to me is that while it's on people's minds to be in this culture war, um, issue around books and what the books have in them, um, a lot of them were bought into the school while the superintendent has been superintendent. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate to see. So, but we have ways that you can get involved in the school board, uh, based on any of these things that we've talked about. If you wanna talk about the superintendent's contract, if you wanna talk about, you know, the new CETA Academy that we're having, uh, if you wanna talk about the eighty thousand dollar canines that we bought or even book bans. There are so many things that our school's board does and talks about in meetings. Uh, we didn't even get to talk about, um, what our finances look like, which was also discussed, um, or even, um, projects that they approved that was on the agenda. But if you wanna talk about any of those things, the school board has a meeting every month. It's normally on the third Thursday. Um, and we ask that you come and show up. You don't even have to speak. Um, but we, we do ask you to come, uh, or listen online. They do stream it. Um, it's something interesting to hear and, uh, I think it's something better to see in person than to see online.
I, I agree. I agree. If you're, uh, medium curious, instead of fully curious, online, I think is certainly a way to check it out easily. But there is something to be said about going in person, not, not speaking, if you don't wanna do that, but watching a full meeting. They open with usually a, a recognition for a particular department or sometimes a team from a local school that's recently won a competition. And so it's, it's nice to see some, um, positive recognition and acknowledgement and different groups from the community come out. That's always a really nice moment. And then you get to actually see the, the action and the way different policies are introduced, discussed or not discussed at all and voted on. And it is, uh, it's, it's really educational and it's a nice way to feel like you are a part of the community, cause you are, whether you're there or not, but you're really watching how the, how, how the machine runs.
Yeah. And my, my only issue with online is we, we do have, uh, a whole media setup for our school board. So you don't always get to see what's happening off the camera.
That's a very good point.
There, there's sometimes a lot of huffing and puffing or whispering or, you know, just, um, sometimes a prior board member used to fall asleep all the time and would never be on camera. So, uh, those things are.
Some tactical editing at times, yeah.
Yeah, those things you just don't see, uh, unless you're there in person. But.
When you're there at the end, uh, you get to talk to everyone, like, we'll be there. It's just you have access. Sometimes board members come down to the floor. You could talk with them. It's just, it's a, it's a very valuable opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, but like Andrew said, especially at the evening board meetings, there is a recognition. And because we're the not Board of Education, um, we also want to recognize some people. And I'm going to take a point, a priv- personal privilege as this being our first episode, to, um, recognize the teachers that have fallen into the East Cobb County Council PTA's Teacher of the Year and Certified Employee of the Year. Um, we just had a celebration for them over at Saint Anne's Catholic Church. It was a very beautiful setup. Uh, the council PTA leaders are amazing, but, um, I do wanna recognize, um, three teachers, which were actually my son's teachers. Um, so Ms. Jankovic, who's at Mount Bethel Elementary School, um, Ms. Jefferson at Dickerson Middle School. I hope I got your name right. I'm so sorry if I haven't. And, uh, Ms. Cook, who's at Walton High School. Um, they were all, uh, dubbed Teacher of the Year by their individual schools and we got to celebrate them. And it was great. And when I got to tell my son that I saw all his teachers, he said, how did I luck up to have, uh, numerous Teachers of the Year that got recognized all at the same time? And, um, I told him because his mom's an awesome advocate. Um, but also because we do have amazing teachers in our schools. So congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year, as well as the Certified Employees of the Year that, um, are in the East Cobb County Council, um, area. So that's all I have for that. That was a quick one.
Oh, no, I, I'll let that be, be the one.
Yes. I'm sure you'll have one next time. But, um, yeah, um, if you listen to the show and you have a spotlight on a teacher in Cobb County that you want us to recognize, please send it in to us. You can reach us at either of our websites. Um, mine is laurajudge.com. That's L A U R A J U D G E dot com. And. We got kids now.
Uh, and mine is andrewforcobb.com. The number four, cobb.com.
Perfect. And so because it's kids' time now, we will leave our board meeting. And I appreciate everyone for listening. Uh, thanks for joining this first episode. Um, anybody who supported us, whether we were running for school board or when we're out there advocating for our kids and trying to change, uh, policy for the better and make things more transparent, we appreciate you for listening and supporting us as well. And, you know, again, we, we did it in, in our teaser, if you listen to us, uh, we say every student deserves a voice and every voice deserves.
Deserves to be heard. And I, I completely agree with that. And I, I wanna echo Laura's, um, thank yous because we are, are still involved because of all the support and because of the fact that we've heard from so many people that the communication and the clarity is so needed and desired. And so the more of that we can provide, great, but the more of you that we can hear from and interact with, even better. So please do not hesitate to reach out and we will be back again soon.
Thank you. Hope to see you soon.